The City of Sonoma Special Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 15th, 2018. And with that, I'll ask for a call to order, please.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Carrato.
Here.
Commissioner Willander.
Here.
Chair Felder.
Here.
Commissioner Bohart.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
And Commissioner Cribb.
Here. And if I could ask Commissioner Carrato to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a few housekeeping items before we get started. First of all, please set all of your cell phones and other devices on silent mode so they don't disturb the meeting. There will be no new items heard by the Planning Commission after 10:30 unless the commission by majority vote specifically decides to continue reviewing items. Because this is a special meeting, members of the public shall have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission concerning any item listed on the agenda during consideration of that item when we open it for public comment, but no other items may just be discussed at a special meeting. Any decision reached by the Planning Commission tonight may be appealed to the City Council and appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 15 calendar days following the Planning And with that, we have a review and acceptance of agendas. Does anybody have any comments on that? Seeing none. Late correspondence, can I have the planning director tell us what the correspondence has come in?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, David Stora, Planning and Community Services Director. We did receive, I think it's 37 pages, at least that's what my computer was telling me when I printed it out today, correspondence regarding the second item on the agenda tonight. I do believe you received a two-page letter today from Ms. Cullen regarding the 249 First West Street application, so that will be probably the one you might want to focus on for now.
With that then, we will move on to the public hearing, item 5.1.
Chair Felder?
Yes.
I'm recusing myself on this item, excuse me.
That's recusing for proximity?
Sorry, Commissioner Bohart, can you state the reason for your recusal?
State the reason for the recusal.
The reason for the recusal is that my property is at 299 First Street West and it has an impact financial value on my property and my neighborhood.
So then, this item is an application for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a .67 acre lot into four lots located at 249 First Street West. And with that, I will take a staff report, please.
Thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Christina Tierney. For those of you who don't know me, like Chair Felder said, the project is located at 249 First Street West. The application under consideration by the Planning Commission tonight is for a tentative parcel map. Design review will take place at a later date. Here's the location of the project. It is adjacent to the bike path. Bike path is located to the north and the Vallejo open space is located to the west and it's right along First Street West and across from Devo Park. Assessment parcel 018121019. The existing conditions of the site, it's a flat 0.67 acre site. It's developed with 1,660 square foot single-family residence with an attached garage and a pool. Access to the property is via a driveway on the adjacent property to the south through an existing 20-foot easement for access and utilities. There are seven existing ornamental trees on site. The project is located in the northeast planning area and the zoning for the site is medium-density residential. The required minimum lot size is 5,500 square feet. The minimum lot dimensions are 55 feet for the width and 90 feet for the depth. The required setbacks for the zoning district are 15 feet for the front and the sides a minimum of seven feet and a combined of 18 feet, 20 feet for the rear. And again, like I mentioned, design review will take place at a later date with a separate application and project plans. So the tentative parcel map would propose us to split the existing lot into four legal lots of record. On the site plans are labeled as parcels one through four. Parcels one through three are proposed to be developed with two-story, single-family residences with attached garages. Parcel one also proposes a pool in the rear yard setback. Parcel four is proposed to be a duplex unit with a detached garage. The minimum, the proposed lot areas range from 7,934 square feet and the smallest is 6,328 square feet. As you can see, they're all above the minimum lot size. They all propose a front setback of 15 feet in compliance with the zoning regulations and the side setbacks are also proposed to be within the allowed dimensions. The exception being that Lot 4 proposes a greater side setback than is required and the rear setbacks are all proposed to be at 20 feet. So a quick overview of the site plan from the left, I can't see, left to the right is one, two, three, and four. Parcel four would take frontage from First Street West and so the front setback would be along First Street West while the others, the frontage, would be off of the proposed private driveway. Here's the overview of the tentative map. Access would be through the existing 20-foot easement on the property to the south and from a 20-foot wide private driveway. We're current, the applicants are currently in discussion with the neighbor on a reciprocal easement and we have a draft that we're working on and would be finalized to govern maintenance and any issues that would come up. Emergency access would be provided via the new private driveway and there is a proposed fire truck turnaround built into it. Parking would be on-site, both within and in front of the new garages. All properties would be connected to the sewer and the utilities would be connected within the proposed easement or the existing easement.
Questions of staff?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Typically on application, or any application, we have attached findings that we have to make, general plan consistency, zoning, environmental review. We don't have those on our staff, in our staff report. Are those?
There you go. Let me take a look.
For us to make it. So I'm just curious, where are the findings for us as the commission to say, there's these 10 findings and we can approve or deny a project?
Findings were in an attachment and those did not get uploaded. My apologies. They haven't changed from the hearing on August 9th and the analysis about CEQA is within the staff report for the lot split.
We didn't really have a hearing on August 8th because it was continued and so we never even, I can't remember that staff report, so.
So the staff report that's in front of you is essentially 99% the same as what was presented in August. There's some additional details in compliance with the code and clarifications of terms with the driveway versus private streets.
Do you have findings for us so we can look at those to approve the project or deny it?
Well, I can, let me take a look. Our typical process for staff has just been to take the findings from the code and have those as an attachment so I can pull those up.
Okay, great. That was my only question.
Sure.
Christina, are you, are we in the middle of something?
Do you want me to find those later?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, if you, do you want a few minutes to try to find those or?
Yeah, absolutely.
I've looked on our iPads and our agendas don't go back to August 4th, so it's not
Mr. Chair, if I can just suggest, rather than wait for us to find the conditions of approval and also we do need to provide you with a resolution of an action, we may want to return with that should the commission wish to take an action on the project tonight. A resolution can come back later when we make those findings and get those conditions for you.
I guess if the commission doesn't feel there's enough information in front of us for the findings and certainly we haven't had a chance to look at the conditions of approval till a document that we received tonight, I'm not too comfortable with moving ahead on this project if the rest of the commission isn't because I just don't think the information is there in enough detail to make a decision.
So I've brought up the findings. This is from our code, section 1963070, tentative map approval or disapproval. So the required findings are that, together with the provisions for its design and implementation is consistent with the general plan, any applicable specific plan, and none of the findings for denial in subsection C of the section can be made. So the analysis about the general plan is in the staff report. The property is designated for medium-density residential by the City of Sonoma General Plan. The medium-density residential land use designation is intended to provide opportunities for multifamily housing and related public improvements, especially in transitional areas between higher density and single-family development. Transitional housing, schools, daycare facilities, churches, fire stations, post offices, nursing homes, et cetera, may be allowed, subject to use permit. So the project is proposing residential development in a residentially designated and zoned property, so the project is in compliance with the land use designation. I also have provided an analysis of policies and the community development element and the environmental resources element and in the public safety element. So the project meets with, for the zoning, we're within, it's an allowed use, we meet the minimum lot size and all the proposed setbacks.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner McDonald?
I'm looking on page four and five and six of the staff report.
Okay, and I guess we'll probably get to this, but could I see the rest of the tentative map approval or disapproval? I can only see a part of it on the screen.
Sure. You want to go down to the supplemental findings? I'm happy to read over the findings for denial. So the findings for denial would be if the design and its improvements are not consistent with the general plan or specific plan, if the site is not physically suitable for the development or the proposed density, the design of the subdivision or proposed improvements are likely to cause substantial environmental damage or injure fish or wildlife and their habitat, the design of the subdivision or types of improvements is likely to cause serious public health or safety problems, or would conflict with easements acquired for, by the public at large for access through the property, et cetera.
Do we have to make findings for the historic analysis that the subdivision meets the intent of the general plan as it relates to historic resources or do we need to have any sort of special language so we could approve or deny?
Yeah, I have a discussion in the staff report on page six. So the project site's in the historic overlay zone and is adjacent to historic structures. The applicants have submitted two historical resource analysis. The first one determined that the existing residence does not qualify for a historic resource under CEQA as it was constructed in 1986. The second identified that the project would not have any indirect impacts to adjacent structures and that it was in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation. So they've gone, they've provided two technical reports by a qualified professional that demonstrated that the project would not have any impacts to historic resources.
Thank you. I'll let the commission and the chair make the decision whether or not they'd like to move forward. That was a question that I posed that I wanted to have findings.
Mr. Chair, if I can take a stab and Veronica can certainly correct me, but what we have in our municipal code are minimum standard of findings. If the commission is so inclined to add an additional finding, you can certainly do that, I would think.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you. My question relates to site design and architectural review and there's a condition of approval that the, you know, there will be further review by the design review and historic preservation commission and I'm curious to what extent the planning commission has a role in that process, number one, and number two, are we just approving tonight the tentative map, which would mean just the parcel boundaries, or are we approving the site design? Because condition of approval 16 says it will be subject to the review and approval of the design review and historic preservation commission. This will encompass site plan adjustments and really only be elevation details, exterior materials, and colors.
Correct. The only application that's before our consideration right now is for a tentative parcel map. So we have no application for design review and the schematics that have been submitted to date are to give an idea of what they are envisioning, but my understanding is they haven't engaged an architect and there are no site-specific designs at this time.
Okay, because the site design is in the public record and there's a condition that says, you know, that there can really be no modifications from the site design.
There are schematics. My understanding is that they have not engaged an architect and they don't have project-specific plans. They couldn't submit for design review tomorrow, for example. They wouldn't have that level of detail.
Are you sure? I thought they had an architect.
Plans, yeah, that's correct.
Please, we haven't opened it to public comment.
Because, oh.
Yeah, just let me interrupt. In your staff report, Christina, you were talking about what they were proposing to build on the properties, including two-story structures.
Correct.
And that's far beyond just the boundaries of the parcel.
Correct, but what's under our review tonight is just the map.
I, it's my understanding that the planning commission has the purview to, since it's a part of the public record, to actually put conditions on that would affect those other items that have been discussed. In other words, not just the parcel map.
I would have to defer to county council. My understanding is that before us, we have one application and that's for a tentative parcel map. I'm looking up the code.
So it's 19.54.080 and there's a section in there where it says, "For projects subject to discretionary review by the planning commission, the planning commission shall be responsible for reviewing and acting upon the project's site plan, building, massing, and elevation concepts to the extent it deems necessary." So if it was just a tentative map, obviously that would be, that's why I asked the question, because all the plans are in here and there's a condition of approval that leads me to believe that we may be approving those as well, so that was the question.
Could I also piggyback on that question because there is discussions about floor area and dimension and whatnot and lot coverage. Is that specific to the conceptual plans that we're looking at or is it more towards what the parameters would be as the zoning code would establish for the lots of those sizes and dimensions?
The floor area ratio that was provided is based on the conceptual site plans and my, is to give us kind of a guideline and as much direction as possible from the information we have at this time.
Okay, because the, that has a lot to do with ultimately the findings that we would make to approve or disapprove or say it's consistent with zoning code and general plan. So that's, I'm glad Commissioner Barnett brought that up because that's one of my parts of confusion with creating findings. And then just generally speaking, so stepping back, I guess this has brought up another question about lot coverage and floor area. The council has made more specific determinations on overall lot coverage and has provided much clarity for the, our planning commission recently. And so I wanted a better understanding of the conceptual site plans. Can we make the findings that lot coverage truly meets the test that has been set by our council recently? In terms of like easement areas and roads and driveways and there's now different things that we have to look at with respect to coverage and so I just was wondering if this proposal meets those tests as it's described in the staff report?
I would have to, I would have to get some direction from city council about what, I'm sorry, about council, about what guidelines prevail. We went with the definition in the code.
Veronica, we recall the project more recently where we've kind of, you know.
Correct, we've kind of been around and around the room on this issue. So I think staff has calculated and I have not been involved with this project sign. I'm here for the next item, so I apologize. But with regard to coverage, I believe staff has calculated this based on their statement in accordance with the municipal code's definition of coverage, correct? Okay. So with regard to this item, they've calculated it based on the definition of coverage contained within the code. If the commission has concerns about the calculation, certainly you can ask for additional information, but it sounds as if staff is confident that they've applied the proper definition. Okay.
They're well within the.
I haven't, I obviously haven't myself calculated it.
Okay, no, I, okay. I was just a general question, so thank you.
It's okay, thanks.
A question, if we address the tentative map this evening, is there going to be an opportunity for them to come back before planning commission when we're talking about massing and scale? And the answer is?
I don't believe they come back after they've been to the design review process. They don't come back to the commission. I don't believe that is part of the process.
As I understand it though, massing and scale is typically under the purview of the planning commission and given its location as far as in the town, it seems like that would be of interest to us to come back.
Generally, projects that originate with us, Commissioner Willander is right, if there was an existing parcel within the historic district and there was no planning commission involvement, it would start, it would originate with design review at that point, I believe.
Yeah, in a different universe, I'd be having the design review component done before the planning commission process. That's certainly one of the development code changes that we can look at because it seems to be causing more confusion than would otherwise in a normal construct, at least for me.
I think that's, that's coming down to the problem we're facing right now is that if we're only being asked to approve a tentative map without the other detail, I don't think this commission is willing to give up that control to the design review commission moving forward, that we would expect it to be here for the additional review.
So a question for council and I'll certainly not expect to answer this one on the wing, but I'm thinking that is there a process where we could have design review take its look at the shape, the form, the massing and typically a commission, we just want to make sure as a staff on a tentative map that the property can be developed, but from what I'm hearing is, no, it actually goes beyond that. We can get to the shaping, the setbacks, establish the footprints and the like. So perhaps we can just take a look at that ourselves and get back to you here through the course of the hearing.
Any other questions of staff?
I'd like to just carry on a little bit further with my comment. There has been some concern expressed as far as in some correspondence regarding this project as far as the appropriateness of project relative to scale and mass. And again, I just, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it's been historically under our purview as far as looking at projects when it comes to scale and mass, not interested in the minutia, not interested in colors per se and the facade, but when it comes to the actual size and how it fits into the context, that has been in our domain and I think that if it's a two-step dance where they want to get some feedback regarding the tentative map, I think I'm, certainly am prepared to make some comment regarding that, but if it's something that we're going to not have the opportunity to speak to scale mass context, then I don't feel prepared that I can make that.
So one quick reply would be simply, you almost have some of those pieces because by virtue of the setbacks, you can understand that if it's in a single-family zone, you're allowed a certain height, maybe a 35 feet. So you could put a simple box that high, that would be the maximum that you could have based on the setbacks. That's not going to be the project that ultimately gets approved. Whether we get down to the level of, you know, is it T-111 siding, is it brick, is it stucco, those are things that I think that the theory is that the design review committee will get those pieces. So to the degree that you want to get more finite on maybe perhaps memorializing the footprint and the shape of the units where they are and getting some more definition on the height of the structures and whether it's single-story, you know, single-story, double-story, whatever, maybe that's something we can respond to later.
Can I just piggyback on that? Because in the, we have, like again, we, I know we have to make findings of consistency with the general plan, historic resources, the fact that it's in a historic overlay zone. And more specifically, a report that's been submitted is on public record, the historic analysis done by Al Stuffy on page 11 specifically gives us very specific criteria in which to approve a development on any of those parcels and so that seems to be the dilemma, at least in terms of my mind. There's specific language about height, so that in my mind is more restrictive than what even the height requirement allows in that zoning district. So that's where my dilemma is and that's why I feel so strongly we need findings and
Mr. Chair, if I could, what would be good would be to, if there are any more questions, we can certainly take those, but open up to a public hearing. Right now, I'm thinking that what we could do is return based on what we've heard already, to come back with a better definition on some of the findings, actually state them, provide the analysis for the findings, expressly state the findings and possibly even include a resolution in that as well because we didn't provide that either. And as I'm saying here, I'm learning on the job.
So are you suggesting that we have, hold the public hearing but then continue this to another meeting to finish the procedure?
That would certainly be my thought at the moment, but you know, opening up the public hearing may change my thoughts and perhaps yours too.
If the councils will, or if the commission is willing to go that step, I think we can proceed and open the public hearing then. All right.
So actually, hear from the applicant first.
Yes, yes, yes. So if the applicant would like to step forward and present your case. Please state your name and address and you have essentially 10 minutes.
Okay, perfect. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. My name is Allegra Diggins representing Sonoma Denmark Properties. My address is 20376 Wolf Meadow Lane in Sonoma, California. My address is 20376 Wolf Meadow Lane in Sonoma, California. Sonoma Denmark Properties is a small, local father-daughter residential development company that has been in the construction industry for many years. We are here to discuss the application for a tentative map to subdivide a site located at 249 First Street into four lots. As you've already heard, Liam Lane subdivision is a 0.6 acre property. Current use of the property consists of a single-family residence with an attached garage. The site showcases prominent features in Sonoma and is located between the city bike path, Depot Park, and is within walking distance of the plaza. Our major goal and design philosophy with this project is to provide a diverse range of residential accommodations, which is much needed in Sonoma, in a way that is harmonious with the city and also the neighborhood. The project, the proposed project includes demolition of the existing residence, construction of three new single-family residences, one duplex, a private roadway, and then also utility improvements. Each single-family residence has a proposed attached garage, with the duplex having a detached garage. Access to all residences is to be provided by means of a private roadway, which will be shared with the neighboring property to the south. A road maintenance agreement is in the process of being drafted in partnership with the owners of, of that property. As part of this project, onsite parking is to be provided in accordance with all planning development guidelines and is seen on the site plan. We have been very proactive with regard to reaching out to neighbors. We've also hosted a meeting with, with neighbors within 500 feet of the property. All neighbor feedback has been positive. No major concerns were raised during that meeting with the neighbors. We have a great local team in place to support design, zoning, and historical guidelines. Chad Mall from Bear Flag Engineering, and then also Alice Duffy, the Historic Preservation Planner who has reviewed the project are both here tonight to help address any questions or concerns that you have. Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Felder and Commissioners. Chad Mall with Bear Flag Engineering. We are the engineers and surveyors for the project. Allegra mentioned that we have been proactive in discussions with neighbors. We sent an introduction letter to, to all neighbors, responded to requests for site plans. We answered preliminary questions that resulted from our reaching out. We held a neighborhood meeting in August to answer questions and even adjusted some of our preliminary designs based upon those sit-down meetings. I know that preliminary designs will be handled in the design review meeting. And it's not part of tonight's meeting in, within my experience of processing a number of subdivisions here in the city. That stuff is usually left for the design review. I've also processed a number of subdivisions here where there was no buildings prepared. It's the lot split and confirmation with the zoning regulations. We decided to add in some of that information to give you kind of the essence of the project and also to help with historic preservation review and, and different items like that. But I have processed a number of subdivisions through planning commission without any building information just because we were going to be following within the required kind of zoning guidelines. So we've also met with Fire Marshal and the Public Works to incorporate comments from them to make sure that that, you know, to get their support of the, of the project. The City of Sonoma General Plan encourages both housing opportunities and residential infill development. Our project satisfies both of these goals. The general plan also encourages a variety of unit types for proposed developments. So therefore, we have applied for three single-family homes and a duplex. One of the rental units being an affordable unit. And within our medium-density residential zoning, it requires between seven and 11 units per acre. Since our project is two-thirds of an acre, that corresponds to a minimum of five units and a maximum of seven units for the property. We chose to propose only the five units. So the minimum that we're supposed to have to align with the neighborhood and not come in with an extremely dense property, what, project. What our goal is, is to meet with all, and align with all the zoning regulations. Our project, you know, our tentative map and our preliminary development plan have been designed for all the zoning regulations, including access, lot size and lot dimensions, density, setbacks, FAR, lot coverage, building height and parking standards. FAR and lot coverage are there for, you know, to kind of, again, to show the intent. We are under the threshold. However, those can vary with our, with our, you know, review through design review. It's, these buildings that are, that are shown on the tentative map are, are there for the essence and not something that should be a deciding factor. Our preliminary plan, which would be subject to the site design and architectural review by the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission demonstrates that these proposed lots can accommodate residential development at the required density range without necessitating any exceptions or variances from zoning standards. In review of other recent projects in this area, neighbors expressed concern about commercial projects hurting the, kind of the residential feel of the neighborhood. And so our project is a exclusive residential project that really meets kind of the intent of that, you know, those concerns. We're following kind of, trying to stay within the intent of the neighborhood. We hope you agree with us that our project meets the intent of the city general plan. It provides housing which is in desperate need. And, and again, I just want to kind of reiterate because there were some discussions, you know, before. We technically could have not shown any, any buildings. We could have just shown lot lines and, and a driveway and said, we're going to meet, you know, the, the zoning regulations for height and, and that stuff. And that, for, for getting the tentative map through, that's typically sufficient. We decided to bring in a little additional information to give you kind of the essence and also to help with historic review analysis for the, the Department of the Interior checklist and guidelines. But again, my experience is, in, in Sonoma, if you guys would typically make suggestions to the designer view, or maybe some suggested conditions of approval. But usually, the, kind of getting into the weeds of designer view is, is reserved for that committee and, and not kind of holding back the, the tentative map conditions of approval. And also, I, I want to make sure that, I don't know if it was mentioned, you know, the findings, I believe, were for a negative declaration for CEQA? Catastrophic exemption. And so the project, you know, at, at Bay has been reviewed through the historical analysis and through CEQA and has found to be, you know, have not have a significant impact to any environmental, you know, environmental features and buildings around us. And, and it kind of went through a thorough vetted review of that CEQA and was found to have that categorical exemption. So I'm available if you have any questions and appreciate you listening to our time. And I do have one request for Chairman Felder. If members of the public come up to speak about the project, I would like the ability to come back and address any of the comments that were expressed, if possible, before you close out the public hearing.
I'll take that under consideration. Chad, if you could come back, we do have questions.
Do have a question. Chad, you had mentioned that you have had other experiences with subdivisions within Sonoma. Have those other subdivisions that you've experienced in this more streamlined process, have they fallen within the historic overlay?
No, Fitz Street West, is that, that's outside of it, right? You did, you did the analysis? Okay, it was outside.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a few questions, if that's okay for you. So anyway, thank you so much. I just, I'm just trying to understand the project better to be able to make a decision. And so I have a few questions about the tentative map with respect to the site plan that was shown as it relates to parking. And then that we have conditions of approval. And I wanted to understand what the requirements are for providing guest parking, since this is a private easement. On one map, it shows that there's on page 25 versus page eight. One shows, page eight shows parking at the end of Liam Lane. Another one shows that there is no parking. I would imagine that staff has reviewed the fact that this is a private road, but still requires guest parking as it relates to creating additional housing units. So how many guest parking spaces has staff required and has public works required?
Sure, so real quick, the, the document you're referring to that has two parking spaces on the end of Liam Lane is from the original submittal. And it was commented by the neighbors to the south, as well as the public works director, that we should not have parking. It was within the easement, but we shouldn't have parking because the ease, existing easement is for access and utilities, not for parking. So we removed those two parking spaces at the end of Liam Lane. And so the current tentative map and site plan, which is in front of you, has, does not include those at the end. City zoning code requires one and a half, or one, so one, it requires two parking spaces per lot. And the, one of them has to be covered. We have two-car garages. And so we actually have double the required parking in front of each of the three single-family homes. So there's two guest parking in the driveway outside of the Liam Lane in front of the garage and then two in, inside the garage. And then for the duplex, we have guest parking on the outside of the fire department turnaround. You can see it's kind of below the southwest corner of the, right here, as well as covered parking in the detached garage. So we are almost double the required parking for the project.
So lot four, parcel four, the pad in front of, onto the side is actually required because it's.
For guest parking.
For guest parking, whereas the other ones you're saying is satisfied by the driveways.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. The other question I had has to do, well, maybe it's both you and staff. I'm still perplexed and confused about what's being proposed and what is actually before us. Because the tentative map is for a minor subdivision for, for lots. But the original property was subdivided in 1980 and's done into a lot split. And now as we're requested to review for additional parcels. And so I don't know if this is considered a major subdivision. And if so, I guess I want clarification from staff or of city attorney that this actually is a minor subdivision. Is the lot that, the, the one to the south, is that considered a remainder parcel? Or what is, and also, in the future, I'm assuming that that lot could be subdivided into parcels and use that same access road? And then they would have to provide their own off-street guest parking? I, I'm just concerned about how it's being reviewed as a minor subdivision. But the idea is that we're, we've got this one road and we're not providing any sort of guest parking, except for what's in the driveway. And as at least I know, I hardly ever use my garage, it's filled with junk, so. So maybe you can provide clarification about the fact that it's a minor subdivision and the fact that the lot next to it could be subdivided and use that road because it's on its property.
Sure, correct me if I'm wrong, but the subdivision map act, I believe subdivisions older than 10 years, you know, are, you know, are dormant. And so like, let's say if something was a designated remainder, if it sits for 10 years, then it becomes eligible. So if that was, it was subdivided in the 80s, it's about 30 years ago. And so it is a completely separate item. And moving forward, the proposed project is in, completely independent of the southern parcel from a subdivision standpoint. The, it's, it's, it's treated as a, a traditional lot, and so it is a minor subdivision. The southern parcel, you know, there, to my knowledge, there's no proposed project. However, due, you know, because of the zoning, it's, I think it's the same zoning as our parcel, they would have the ability to subdivide in the future. We explored that with the public works director, Colleen Ferguson, to discuss kind of what that would look like. And the private roadway being 20-foot wide, having a fire department turnaround, all those features, and then also the presence of the bike path to the north. If, if they subdivided in the future, a sidewalk would not be required along that. So it'd be similar to the PUD to the, to the south, a couple doors down. But they do, to my knowledge, they would have the ability to subdivide. They would be using the same driveway. We granted a reciprocal easement back to the neighbors to the south of, of four feet across the, the strip of our property so that they would have full use within that, within that driveway.
Oh, well, and the last question, it gets back to the general question that I had about lot coverage and how the council in the past has made rulings about how we calculate lot coverage. So all the parcels have a four-foot easement over it that's paved. And then parcel four is more encumbered in the fact that it has pavement for a required guest parking space. So I guess my question is, does especially parcel four, does it meet the lot coverage requirements as been defined by our city council?
The driveway parking.
For the, for the private parking, yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's paved and it's covered, so I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, we ran the calculations, probably a couple months back. So if something has changed within the last eight weeks or so, then, but under the current guidelines, it, it does meet the lot coverage. The hardscape on the project is pretty minimal besides, you know, you have the fire department turnaround, but you, the, you know, and you have a patio out front. But, you know, besides that, there's not a lot of coverage in the, kind of the landscape yard kind of qualification. And so we are still under that percentage allowed.
So the, what's being proposed for parcel four with the four-foot strip of pavement for access and the private, I mean, the pad for guest parking is included, has been calculated, and it, it, what's being proposed complies with lot coverage?
The four-foot strip is the easement of that strip, only about two feet is actually paved. So the, there's a, a kind of, the out, out 18 inches or so is just landscape. So the driveway is centered. You have a 20-foot driveway, six-inch curbs on each side, so about a total width of 21 feet, centered on a 24-foot combined easement. And so that leaves about 18 inches out. So only two and a half feet of the four feet is paved and outside that is just landscape. So, but the parking, the driveway, and the structures and the patio were included in the calculations.
Okay, thank you.
Got all the questions? Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, thank you.
I still don't understand.
That, then we will open it to the, can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For Alice.
Yeah.
So again, I'm still a little confused to the extent that we're discussing massing. But in one of your reports, you made a few recommendations, one of which was all the buildings should be one-story. And then in a follow-up letter, you said that the proposed designs were consistent. And I was just curious if you could talk about that sort of.
Yes, absolutely. In the first report, which was the historic resource evaluation and identification, I included some recommendations for the early planning process for this project. Making recommendations about scale, massing, setback, general ways to think about materials, borrowing design elements from the nearby historic resources. When the more specific project came through, I evaluated the specific project against both my recommendations, the spirit of scale, massing, setback, design features, and the Secretary of the Interior standards, and I found it consistent. While not all of the buildings are one-story, I believe that their street appearance and their experience from the public is consistent with my original recommendations of minimizing the street-facing massing.
Okay, thank you.
And also, while I'm. And also, while I'm here, I wanted to commend the applicants for taking this opportunity to involve historic preservation in the early planning efforts of this site planning. So often, we only see historic preservation brought in at the last minute when somebody realizes that their building could be historic or could possibly have a visual impact on somebody nearby. So while this might be a little bit confused right now about why there is so much information presented in a simple lot subdivision, I think that it really does inform the whole planning process going forward about historic preservation and setting some ways to think about the planning process for this particular site, which is particularly sensitive for its historic context.
Since Alice, can I ask you a question? It's just, it's a follow-up to the report and the follow-up to that report. In the analysis, there's no really specific analysis of the historic lot pattern of the area. And this particular subdivision, whether or not you feel that the lot pattern and configuration of this particular subdivision is consistent with the surrounding and doesn't deter from the historic overlay zone or the potential for the train district, the depot district, the actual lot pattern itself.
I'm kind of putting that in the context of your previous question a minute ago about the history of the lot subdivision. And is that that kind of history of lot or the historic development pattern of the area?
The historic development pattern of the area and whether or not this specific subdivision, which we're being asked to review, meets the test of historic compatibility and the integrity of both the overlay district and the potential for a new historic district.
I believe it does. This would constitute new infill construction within a potentially historic area. We, as to date, do not have a historic district for this area, although the idea has certainly been floated. And as I understand it, is or has been in the works. So, but until that historic district is officially established, we really can't go forward with that as a context. But speaking more broadly, I think that this pattern of residential development is certainly consistent with the historic pattern of development around the historic railroad area. I'm not going to call it a district, I'm going to call it an area, just to avoid confusion, and with this whole section of Sonoma. We have a variety of commercial and residential uses of varying densities. Going historically, we've had some low-density, higher-density, two-story, one-story, more lot coverage, less lot coverage. So I think that the proposed Liam Lane development is consistent with the general spirit of the development of the area historically.
Thank you, that's been very helpful, thanks.
Now I will go out to the public, and I would ask anyone who'd care to speak on this item, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. When you approach the podium, state your name and address. And have at it, anyone care to speak?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jim Bohar. I live at 299 First Street West, which is about three parcels down from the project. The proposed project at 249 First Street West will have a direct impact on the economic value of my home, depending on how it's developed. Also, it'll have an impact on the historic neighborhood. By the way, I want to emphasize that this is part of, this may not be part of an historic train district, but it is part of the historic overlay, which is an important element in our general plan. My property was built by the Spous Johnny family, later occupied by the, owned by the Aroldi family. And I went to a great amount of trouble and time to be awarded two historic preservation awards for that property. Commissioner Cribb is very familiar with that because he was sitting on the Design Review Commission during that time. I was required to follow the letter of historic preservation very carefully in terms of having hand-meled lumber and double-hung windows, which Commissioner Cribb and I had many discussions about. This project will not clearly concur with the general plan and the overlay unless, number one, the staff report expunges the multiple inconsistencies with the Client Commission Planning Director ordered historic resources evaluation. I believe that if this project as presented is approved by you, all of the content presented will be approved, all the attachments, the staff report. The Design Review Historic Preservation Commission will not be able to change that in any significant way. I consulted two licensed architects here in Sonoma, who have submitted dozens of projects before this, this process, before the commission. Their opinion was that, that, just that, every single bit of the report, the presentation you have is going to be in straitjacket when it gets to design review. Number two, implement the Alice Duffy Prepared Historic Evaluation Report emphasizing 311 and 12, the recommendations, which are five. Some recommendations about citing, massing, proportion, materials to achieve compatibility, setbacks, height, massing materials, and details. It was mentioned that the appellant had a neighborhood meeting, and we did not, I invited them to my home, we had several neighbors there, and we did not agree on all those points. A stronger alternative here will be for the Planning Commission require that the full complete package, including all architectural information and landscaping, consistent with the Alice Duffy report, be submitted to the Planning Commission for consideration. Your commission is uniquely qualified and experienced to perform this traditional and important role to ensure the application...
Jim, I'm sorry, you're out of time.
...will be consistent with the historical overlay in the general plan, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, my name is Dick Fogg. I live at 291 First Street West, just south of this, of this project. Just some very nuts and bolts things from the guy who's going to live next door to this. First of all, that is a very loud property. The depot weddings right across the street, not across the street, across the path where they play Jeremy Was a Bullfrog over and over and over. Secondly, you have two softball diamonds and a baseball diamond, basically across the path. And then you have across the street, the football stadium with the high school, youth groups on Saturdays. And when those football people aren't using, it's used by soccer people. There's a lot of noise comes out of that. The net is, I would suggest a maximum buffer along that back fence, both in terms of plantings of trees, if necessary, and a high, thick fence. I think they'll want it. Secondly, the proposed density is very tight lot coverage by anybody's. There are five structures, four houses and a garage on .67 acres. The net of this is the parking is going to be tight under any, any circumstances. And on the other side of that street, 20 feet or whatever it is, there are going to be other houses who are going to want to park on that, that turnaround and on the street too. And I know from living with Jim Bohar on our street, it's virtually impossible to park on those little streets, particularly when a delivery truck or something comes. And finally, and I don't know, I'm not, haven't worked this project over, but we have rain puddles. And the part of that lot floods during the winter in heavy rains. In fact, our property is, I don't know the actual, a foot, a foot and a half raised up on fill, just so that we wouldn't have flooding. And we do have flooding just the outside of our lot in heavy fall of winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else? Seeing none? Almost seeing none.
Almost. Close, but not quite. Chair Felder, members of the commission, I'm Michael Woods. I'm an attorney here in Sonoma. My office is at 846 Broadway. My residence is on First Street West, but south of the plaza. I represent the Tarantino Family Trust that owns the property immediately to the south. When we first became aware of the project and looked into it before it went to the commission the last time, the issue that we saw was that the driveway was going to replace our driveway, my client's driveway, and so we needed to have a reciprocal easement. And Allegra's father was very kind to immediately agree that yes, that would be a reciprocal easement. And we're in the process of negotiating that document. And my issue this evening is much narrower than all the other ones that you're considering. So this is all pretty, I think, pretty straightforward, hopefully. One thing to point out, as Chad indicated, there will actually be a total of 24 feet easement width between the existing 20-foot easement and the new reciprocal easement that lies four feet to the north of that. And that gives you enough width for the shared driveway. The project will involve removing the existing driveway that my clients use, which is completely outside the 20-foot easement. So that actually will be gone. There'll just be one driveway access into the property. One issue that we also came up with was, along with the need for a reciprocal easement, there's also a need for a driveway maintenance agreement, some sort of structure between the two properties. As was indicated, we have no current plans to develop, and we wanted to be sure that the costs of installing and maintaining that driveway were borne by the subject property, not by my client's property. And as of today, Allegra's indicated their agreement that the condition of approval that relates to the shared expense could be revised, consistent with that understanding. So I provided some language earlier to staff back when Aaron Hollings' work was incorporated in the conditions of approval you have tonight. What I'm passing out is a slight revision to that to reflect the fact that the installation and maintenance expense would be on the subject property, unless and until such time as my clients develop their property. At that point, it would be different. But again, no current plans to do that. We just didn't think it was fair to have to pay the cost of maintaining a driveway that we weren't electing to put there. We were having it there as a result of the project. So those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last call. You've already had your turn.
May I have one administrative comment?
No, sorry. With that, then, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. You didn't have anything, Chad, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can just interject. So prior to the opening of the public comments, there's a question about possibly continuing the item. The first date that we would have would be a regular meeting of December the 13th, so I just want to kind of put that out there. The question then would be is, what I've taken down notes is, can we prepare you additional conditions of approval, which incorporate that which we've just received? And also to modify the findings, to include general plan findings and maybe tighten up the sequel findings, perhaps even bring back a resolution? And I'd like to have a discussion in a staff report that talks about the design review component being reviewed by your commission. Those conclude my comments.
So that, you're suggesting that the Planning Commission would have input to the size and massing and some of the other things at some point?
Well, it would be to have that discussion. It's really not clear in my mind and certainly want to be responsive to the commission. Certainly, I've heard that it's tradition. I want to see what the code says, and I can confer with council on that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, comments, discussion, possible motions?
Can I raise one question? Because it has to do with, a member of the public brought up a very important point having to do with the noise and the need for noise attenuation. So what would be very helpful is all to understand the noise standard in that area, what mitigation we may need for construction, and whether or not we're increasing density in an area that already exceeds our noise level standards for, the city is based on the general plan. So that would be really helpful to understand that. And then, what was the other thing? And also, if there's any conditions that should be drafted for us to be able to review at the next meeting. And also, there was brought up that there is a parking issue in the neighborhood already. I experience it myself, and I do go down there during special events. So I would hope that we might have an opportunity as a commission to talk about parking. The fact that our subdivision code does not require guest parking as part of a subdivision. So this might be a good opportunity to provide some direction for staff if we wanted to talk about the fact that there's no guest parking. And if the lot to the south is subdivided, there will continue to be no guest parking.
Commissioner Burnett, did you have?
Well, I would be more than happy to discuss what Commissioner McDonald just discussed. But again, I'm a bit confused because typically in a tentative map application, we would just literally be approving parcels. And in this situation, it seems like the conditions of approval apply to a lot more than just parcels. Design review has the right to discuss elevations and paint colors and materials, et cetera. And there's sort of a massing and site design component that seems to be missing from the process. And so if to date, Planning Director Storey's point, that can be all ironed out by the next meeting, I'd be happy about that. But I would also sort of want to maybe further discuss that because if it's just going to be on December, we just have a tentative map, you know, and everything else is going to be discussed by design review, then perhaps that's unnecessary. It just, to me, it appeared that if a project initiates with the Planning Commission, we do have the right to discuss massing and site design, et cetera. And I just want to make sure whether it's here or another commission, or perhaps through a condition of approval, we get that right.
So just a little bit of clarity on this issue. Your code as respects design review, sorry, addresses itself to both site design and architectural review. And so that particular code section, which is 1954080, also addresses itself to a couple of additional things. One has to do with that site design and architectural review can be bought before either the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, or the Planning Commission, or both. So it's stated as an and/or in the code. The second thing is that with regard to this particular property, it would at this point appear to me at first blush, and we would want to confer with staff further before it comes back to the commission, but under the table in that code section, single-family development, fewer than five units and associated accessory structures would normally not require that review, but inside the historic zone, it does. So because this property is within the overlay, site design and historic, site design and architectural review appear to be mandatory for single-family residential structures, at least at first blush to me. But we will dig deep into that before the item comes back to the commission and ascertain that fact. The conditions of approval relative to just the subdivision come back, need to make clear that the lot lines, if, in fact, that's all you are approving, are all you are approving, and that the rest of the entitlement would need to go with site design and architectural review at a subsequent date.
Okay, I guess I'm ready for a motion of some sort if we wanted to continue this item. But I do think the sentiment that I've heard from the commission is that we don't want to relinquish some of the control over size and massing and some of the other details so that hopefully that's what you'll come back with. Is there a motion from someone?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could, suggest simply picking a date specific if you want. We will try our darndest over the holiday period to get it ready for you, but at least we can continue it to that date. Should there be a problem at a staff level, we'll continue it from that date on, but we'll shoot for the 13th.
So we'll continue to a date, date certain, and then we can always do it again if we have to?
Yes. Yes.
I make a motion that we continue this item with all the previously discussed reasons to the regular meeting of December thirteenth.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous six-zero. With that, we will take a five-minute break. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. So moving along, a public hearing on considering and possibly taking action on adopting a resolution relating to the expiration of a use permit and design review approval for the Mission Square Development Project. And I believe Commissioner Barnett would like to speak.
Well, I think Commissioner Krev wants to speak first.
Be before state. I will have to recuse myself for a potential financial conflict of interest, as my wife has her real estate office in the parcel immediately to the west and has a tenant there as well. So I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you.
And in terms of recusal, I want to share some thoughts about that as well and offer some comments about my decision to recuse. We are here tonight because in some way I was involved in this process. I first, my first experience with this project was when I voted to approve this project as a member of the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission back in 2014. I, obviously, this was a major project. I was aware of the project. As I just said, voted to approve it. As time went on, I was curious about what was going on with the project. In a small town, rumors go around. Some people said it wasn't happening, some people said it was happening. As time went on and on, I just figured it was never going to happen. As a student of the municipal code, I'm very familiar with permits, time limits, and extensions, et cetera. I knew that two applications for extensions were made, the last one being in February 2016, which would take you to February 2017. So at that point, I figured when nothing was going on, the project was over. Late last year, before I was appointed to the planning commission, I asked our former planning director about this project. I said, well, what's going on with that? The use permit, again, my reading, was expired. And he said, oh, they had their building permits, don't worry about it, Kelso. So in February of this year, I was appointed to the Board of the Blue Wing Adobe Trust as a, well, I guess the Clydesdale Farm really wasn't part of the situation there. But people at the time asked me, what's going on with this project? Again, what's going on? When is this project going to happen? And I said they had their building permits. I went into the city hall just to sort of see what, you know, just to check out the building permits, and there were no building permits. So, and the city staffer at the time, Lisa, told me, oh, there's a lot more work that needs to be done. So that sort of raised some red flags with me because from what I, again, my readings, the use permit was expired. I ultimately made an appointment. I spoke with Wayne Ryerick about this and discovered that the use permits were issued just two days after I was in there, even despite being told there was a lot of work to be done. Again, I thought it was a situation where the project may or may not happen. And then I spoke with Bill Willers and Carol Marcus about this over the summer, and they told me that the project was going to happen. But again, it was one of those situations where I just wasn't sure. When construction fencing went up, obviously, I thought, oh, wow, the project's going to happen, and this could create some issues primarily for the developer because if there is a view out there that if permits are issued based on invalid permit, which I guess is the topic of tonight's discussion, then there could be no vesting. This could actually be a problem for the developer. And so that's when this was brought towards the city. And from what I understand, at that point, the permits were suspended. In my view, my bias has always been toward the process and following the code. I feel like there were some points in this process where people decide, for example, the planning commission has the right to extend a use permit, no one else doesn't. I feel like perhaps, perhaps not, decisions were made without input from the planning commission. So in my view, I'm open-minded on this, and I'm fair, and if I have a bias, it's toward the municipal code. That said, I understand why my involvement in this item would cause concern because I have brought this issue to the city. And so even though I do believe I have an open mind on this, I think it's probably best that I recuse myself. I also live five-hundred-and-seventy-five feet from this project, and even though that's not within the state law in terms of a potential conflict of interest, again, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself and join Commissioner Krev in the lobby.
And we still have a quorum. So I will ask staff to give us a report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. And then there were five. So David Storey, Planning and Community Services Director. I will be brief tonight. I have a few overheads because you heard the word use permit and building permits. So I just want to do a very brief presentation regarding discretionary permits and ministerial permits because Wayne's world and David's world are two different worlds.
David, excuse me just a minute. Would you be able to speak closer to the microphone? We have at least one commissioner that's having difficulty hearing.
Thank you. We can do that. So I just got through talking about Wayne's world and David's world. And my world is the discretionary permit world, and Wayne's world is ministerial permits. And I'll try to explain just very briefly what they are because there's going to be a little bit of overlap tonight. And we'll be talking about how the present application falls within the two types of permits in here in California. So a discretionary permit is basically a permit that comes before your planning commission for the most part. That can be a variance, a tentative map, tentative parcel map, a use permit or a conditional use permit, depending on what agency you call it, rezones, general plan amendments, something that involves discretion. It's can I do it or can I not do it? And certainly, this evening, we're talking about a use permit that was granted in 2014. And I'll show you an overhead later on how the dates within the staff report kind of fall into one another. A ministerial permit is Wayne's kind of domain with respect to issuing a building permit for construction. And those kind of permits occur after discretion has been exercised, after an appeal period, perhaps. And you can see here some, for examples, of those types of permits. This particular exhibit I put together to show that in February, on February the nineteenth, 2014, you can see that the entitlement was approved by the city council after an appeal process. And there were two trips, basically one on May the twentieth and July the fifteenth at the Design Review Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee, where the last one on July fifteenth, I believe, was a landscape review process. Per the municipal code, sixteen days after is when the permit becomes effective. And so that's how you make it from July the fifteenth to August the first. So from that date, you get a year's life of the permit. So I colored that yellow for you. That would be the first expiration date. And before that date, the applicant could have submitted to Wayne's department for a building permit. That did not happen. And so on the twelfth of March of 2015, before, one, two, three, four, five months or so before the first expiration, if you will, an application was processed at the planning commission for a continuation of that use permit, the discretionary permit, that took the expiration to its first expiration date, or the second expiration date, if you will, the first extension date, to August the first of 2016. And during the, what, four months later, an application was submitted to the building department on the twenty-seventh of December 2016. And you can see that the second extension was on February of 2016, and that's how we got to August the first of 2017. So from the twenty-seventh of December, you can see that it took almost that following year, a whole year, to actually at least get the entitlement through the county approved, and that was the ministerial permit. And so you can also see on the twenty-eighth of February that the building permit was actually issued by the city of Sonoma, ten weeks or so, I think it is, following the approval of the permit. And Wayne can explain to you that process of what it takes to get a building permit and some of the complications that can occur with respect to encroachment permits or well-abandonment permits and things of that nature. You can see a couple of things from this chart. Number one, it was almost twenty-eight months from August the first of 2015, from the time of the approval all the way through the first extension before that first building permit was requested of the city of Sonoma. And it took almost fourteen months after they were submitted for it to actually be issued by the city of Sonoma. And Wayne, again, can talk about that process predating my arrival here. But certainly, you can see communication between staff that the applicant had submitted for a building permit prior to the expiration of the use permit. And again, that goes into the discretionary world versus the ministerial world. So just following briefly, the, yeah, I turned that off intentionally, following through the staff report, and I won't go through each page of that staff report. But before you this evening is a recommended staff approval of a resolution to determine that the use permit had not expired prior to the submission of a building permit application, and that the applicant had made a good faith effort and expressed intent by their actions to pursue the issuance of a building permit. And through conditions not of their own doing, that it took a while for that building permit to be issued. Clearly, the city of Sonoma is not Clearly, the City of Sonoma is not going to issue a building permit until all of the necessary checks and balances are there, conditions of approval that were created by the Planning Commission, and also making sure that outside agencies were okay prior to us doing that. And I believe that's what Wayne and his staff were reviewing, was to make sure that those things had been done prior to the issuance of a building permit by the city. So staff does recommend approval of that resolution that's in your packet. I believe it's attachment number six, or five, excuse me, just a minute. I'll get there. That would be attachment number five, Resolution 062018, to determining that the permits were not expired pursuant to our development code. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Commissioner Cravill.
I have a few questions, but I'll start with, it seems like there's a gray area between when the permit expired and when it was, when the use permit expired and the building permit. Is there any case law around that deals with an issue like this at all?
There is case law dealing with the issue of a permit expiration or land use entitlement expiration, or at least, yes, land use entitlement expiration prior to the issuance or construction under a building permit. Many cities in California have similar ordinances to ours that appear to apply for an automatic expiration of a permit. Generally speaking, automatic expirations of permits are sort of frowned upon, for lack of a better word, or automatic expiration of entitlements are frowned upon, primarily because the courts have found that the reasons associated with why those legislative automatic, if you will, expirations exist is to prevent a individual developer, et cetera, from reserving land for future purposes, who doesn't have a present intent to proceed with the development. Under those circumstances, the courts generally favor kind of where we are here, notice opportunity for a hearing and a hearing as to whether or not there, the intent of the ordinance is met, does the applicant have an intent to proceed with the, a present intent to proceed with the development in good faith. Under those circumstances, generally speaking, and there is not a lot of case law on this subject, but generally speaking, the court has issued a disfavor of expiring the permit. Again, not a lot of case law on the subject, and the case law that we do have on the subject is fairly old, but there is.
Okay, so I believe one of the things that we need to determine here is intent on the part of the applicant to proceed. So my question is, they say they started construction, so is excavating and paving, and is that part of a construction?
I'll let Wayne address that while he's collecting his thoughts. I will mention that in the timeline in your staff report, we did show that there was one encroachment permit that was issued that was, that expired, and I believe that was for frontage and sidewalk improvements, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe staff had not received any requests for inspections at that point. I do believe that they have submitted, the applicant submitted, another encroachment permit request, but that was part of the suspension action that I think Mr. Ryerick is waiting to, to see the outcome of.
So in answer to your question regarding construction, as it relates to the building permits, there was, there's been no discernible work done on the property that required a building permit. So under the building permits, there was no, there was no work that was actually performed that, that would have required a building permit. There were other activities, however, that were construction-related that had occurred on the property and related to a well permit and, and fencing and a construction shack, and there were some other, you know, I think some grubbing that was done on the sites. There were construction-related activities that had been performed at the time that we suspended the building permit, but the, but there was no actual work that would have required a building permit that was, had been, has been performed.
Wayne, in terms of that encroachment permit, construction fences are barriers that are placed in city right-of-way. Does that not require an encroachment permit?
It does.
Okay.
Virginia, I'm, I'm not an attorney, of course. You are. Was there, should there, should there have been consideration for requesting a tolling agreement to fill the gap here while perhaps the developer anticipated these delays, rather than let this run on and put us in a situation we're in tonight?
Well, now you're sort of asking me a best practice question as opposed to whether or not it's legally required for them to do that. I guess I would say it might be a best practice for a developer to proceed and come forward and say, "Hey, let's look at this. Let me ask for an additional extension," or at least advise that there's, there's likely to be a need for one, "I'm still intending to proceed," et cetera. Sort of put the city on notice and give them, the city, the opportunity to hold this hearing in advance of this time period. And I think, you know, we were not afforded that opportunity to hold it in advance. The issue did not become, come forward, at least to the staff's identification. I think you heard a little bit earlier, until there were inquiries raised by the public relative to this very issue, and then we felt, "Okay, well, then let's take it forward for the hearing that otherwise would have taken place in advance of this, this point in time." So I guess I would say that would have been good and it would have been cleaner. That's certainly true.
One more question. Reading the material and trying to get familiar with this, there are a lot of legal, this is sort of in a legal soup to me. There's a great many legal issues. It occurs to me that, that having this come before the Planning Commission is rather unusual kind of analysis we're being asked to make. We're not, we are dealing with, with facts of schedules and expectations and things, but it seems to me that there are a lot of these issues are, that are supported by legal precedent and perhaps expectations that the applicant could have relied on. I'm, I'm not an attorney, can't really evaluate those expectations that have weight in the Could this not have, I mean, this has been going on for quite a long time. Was there an attempt to settle this with the city legal staff and the applicant?
Please.
Should that have, should that have been a little more aggressive resolution rather than bringing it here tonight?
So unfortunately, with complaints having been filed, a report of threat of litigation, there's nothing that we could really do to settle it with the applicant themselves that wouldn't expose the city to potential claims from the opposite direction. Therefore, given that the code provides that this is the forum for which a permit, a permit expiration is to be heard, we felt that the best way to address the issue was to bring it forward in accordance with the process that exists within the municipal code.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryerick. So I'm still stuck back in when the permit expired and the gray area, because I think that's what we've got to deal with here today. Was there any correspondence, documentation, that they were still planning to go forward with this project? Do you have any documentation to that effect?
Well, the applicant, after the expiration date of the use permit, we, there was plenty of correspondence after that timeframe with the, with the applicant or the applicant's architect regarding the project. So there were definitely conversations had, and nothing that would indicate that the project was being abandoned in any way.
I have a question for you, Wayne. Could you go through a little bit of the, the complications that, from the ministerial side on, on getting approvals from the county and others that seemed to delay this? Was that a very unusual circumstance, or was that something that is fairly typical with this type of a project?
Well, I think each project is a little bit unique, and the conditions of approval for this project were unique. I don't know that you could point to another project that had the same types of conditions. So the tribal treatment plan was something that they were, the applicant went through a process in trying to develop that, that plan. I think it took about a year to go through that exercise. There was also the sewer mitigation that needed to be coordinated with the county, and these were part of the conditions of approval. So there, there were activities that were being done that are, that can be time-consuming. I think the amount of time that went by was, I mean, it was, it was definitely lengthy, but, but projects oftentimes go through that, that process.
So do you consider that then the applicant was acting in good faith when he actually submitted a request for a building permit, even though some of the pieces were not in place for you to be allowed to issue it?
Yeah, that part is not uncommon. It's, it's very common that someone would make an application for a building permit, submit plans and other documents, but not have everything, all the i's and t's dotted with respect to what might be required in the conditions of approval, because those are happening in a parallel path. So there may be other agency approvals, Health Department, Sanitation Department, wastewater inspection. There are all sorts of different agencies or departments that need to continue to review the plans and, and do a final approval. And so it's not unusual that someone would make an application and not have everything done.
But it's certainly outside of their control at that point to, to force the other conditions to be satisfied?
That's correct. To a large extent. I mean, the applicant obviously has some control over timing and, and due diligence in terms of turning things around, but oftentimes, there, it is out of their control.
Any other questions?
I had a question about, I guess it would be either the California Building Code or even our own municipal code as relates to building permit issuance and expiration. Is there anything that the city has in its municipal code that allows you as a building official to say, "Okay, we waited long enough and a permit expires on its own"? And is there a process that you as a building official writes a formal letter saying, you know, "We waited six months. The municipal code says, you know, on, after six months, a permit expires unless you submit to us what you're doing in good faith to continue the, the permit." And then that would take place, and then maybe additional fees need to be paid or whatever. Is there any process like that that we have in place?
Well, there, there is a process in place. We, we review permit applications periodically to see how close they are to, to expiring. We try to give applicants notification, either in writing or verbally, that the, there needs to be activity on the permit in order for it to, to continue. As I say, we were in contact with project architect on and off throughout, you know, the, the four years since they really started, but certainly from the time that the, the building permit was applied for, we, we were in, in contact with them. So building permits expire by limitation if permit isn't issued within 180 days because the building official broad latitude in terms of granting extensions. And in this particular case, I granted several extensions of time to allow them to continue their work on, again, fulfilling requirements of the conditions of approval because they were active in doing that.
Thank you. And I guess if we were to add up the number of potential extensions of 180 days, there was probably, in your estimate, how many times, just, just generally, like, they had discussions of extending the, the permit either verbally or, you know, talking to the architect and saying, "Okay, we need to get this stuff in," or, you know?
Right. Well, the original application, permit application was December 27th of 2016, so, you know, there was at least five extensions.
And I'm, I'm going to maybe ask the city attorneys, is this, would this be normal or normal for maybe the, the building official? Does it seem unreasonable for a project of the size to, to do that?
I, I guess I would say, in my experience, which is all I can really speak to, I'm not sure size is always the complicating factor. Sometimes some projects are just more complicated than others in terms of how, how many, I'll call them extraneous, outside the city's control certainly, or not even with the city, types of permits, entitlements, or other requirements have to be met in order to get to the point of the issuance of a building permit. And I can't, I can't individually speak to how difficult that may have been in this present circumstance, but it's not unusual for a project to meet some of those, I'll call them hurdles along the way in the building permit, you know, after they've asked or received a building permit and in the process in getting to a final approval of that building permit so that construction can begin. Having said that, this project has been around a long time. I mean, there, there's no question about that. But I think the applicant may speak to what efforts that they undertook to reach a, a point where the building permit could be issued and how difficult or non-difficult that was. I can't really speak to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wayne, this is a process question. When an applicant submits for a building permit and you know that there are some encumbrances or requirements, conditions that go beyond city, as with this case, the county, does the city then just simply put that application in a holding pattern and it's, and no action is taken, no review action is taken on the part of the city until the county conditions or the conditions involving the county are met? Yes, to the extent that, that we know that they're working on or they're in process, yes, the, the, the application gets put in, in a holding pattern, if you will, that, that we basically hold it until the, the action is accomplished or, or taken care of.
Mr. Chair, if I can just simply add as well, kind of going along with Commissioner McDonald's comment, had the city had its own sewer department, it might be a different issue as well, because clearly, most full-service cities have their own sewer, their own water. This was a case where we had to go, Wayne had to wait for another agency to complete its review before he could issue that permit. And that, that's why also necessitated the deed for the extensions.
Okay. I think then we will open this up for the applicant to make a presentation, and you have up to 20 minutes if you need it. And please state your name and address, please.
Will do. My name is Christina Lawson. I'm with the law firm of Hanson Bridget at 425 Market Street in San Francisco. I have served as land use counsel to this 14-unit Mission Square project, I guess now for more than a decade. For some context, and I will go into some detail about all the activities later in remark, my remarks, this project has been in the entitlement phase or the discretionary permit phase, and then this sort of ministerial permitting phase since 2001, more than 17 straight years. If anyone doubts why housing costs in California are so expensive, this project is the poster child. Just this past week, more than 25,000 Buick County residents lost housing, but here we are to discuss whether or not a 14-unit project that was approved more than four years ago and has been in literally- four years ago and has been in literally near daily process. There are thousands of email communications between our project team and your city staff, between lawyers and your lawyers. This project has been in process since it was approved in 2014. And to say that the project team and the permities are exasperated by this process is an understatement. I did want to address the issue of Mr. Barnett's so-called recusal this evening as well because when a commissioner is required by law to recuse themselves, they're required to leave the room immediately. And his comments from the dais about the reasons he believes this use permit had expired and the other remarks that he made should be stricken from this record altogether because they were completely improper. While we don't agree with the process or with staff's actions to suspend the, all of the permits for this project, we do agree with staff's recommendation this evening that you find the project entitlements to be unexpired. We request that you adopt staff's recommendation and request that you also direct staff to take any action necessary to ensure the project entitlements and building permits are extended for at least 12 months in order to allow construction to recommence and the project to be successful. I wanted to note as well that during the course of this project, when it became clear that the county water agency was going to delay and that the processing of the sewer mitigation measure was going to cause significant delay, we approached your former plan, a community, I'm going to get the title wrong, David Goodison, and asked that we, he bring back to this planning commission, a modification of the conditions of approval to remove this automatic expiration date. We've known that this automatic expiration date was a problem all along. We don't believe the permit actually expired. We believe we took all actions necessary to keep the permits, all permits, in effect. But we did make that request and he declined to bring that request forward to all of you. As you know, this project is located at 165 East Spain Street. It's owned by Mission Square Sonoma LLC. And the members of this entity are Marcus, Yvonne, David, and Linda Dieter. They're two sets of husbands and wives. They're a family that has long owned property here in Sonoma and they have been terrific stewards of this property. They're all here with us this evening. Their children are here. This project is important to them, as all of their properties have been. They're also happy to answer any questions you may have directly of them. Prior to issuance of the building permits that have now been suspended, the permities had spent in excess of $3 million in costs over the course of many years to obtain the numerous approvals and permits that are required to build this project. The project team and permities were required to pay for numerous studies, analyses, evaluations, surveys, monitoring agreements, and assessments, architects, attorneys, and consultants. And this does not include the value of the property itself. Earlier this year, permities obtained a bid for the project construction costs from Wright Contracting and signed a construction contract with projected costs of more than $6 million. The project schedule and the construction contract assumed a 10-month construction schedule commencing August 30th of this year and ending in July of 2019. The project is bank-financed with the project's construction financing all closing in early September of this year. And as noted in our correspondence earlier, the permities are now concerned that the bank will find them in default based on the city's actions. So, why are we here this evening? I think at least one of the commissioners already asked the question about whether this was the proper forum. On Thursday, October 4th, 2018, without any notice whatsoever, the city of Sonoma issued a stop-work order for this project by suspending all permits obtained for the project. The stop-work order was delivered to the project architect's office while the project architect was on-site overseeing vibration monitoring work that was underway. The stop-work order was also emailed to the permities representative, Lori Bremner, at 12:10 PM that same day. The email to Ms. Bremner included a note that Mr. Wirick, who issued the stop-work order, would be leaving for a long weekend and would not be available after 1:10. So, there was essentially 50 minutes for us to respond, which we were unable to do. As we've tried to understand the series of events here, it has come to our attention that the city had received complaints about the project and its entitlements as early as November of 2017 and possibly even earlier. In the supplemental materials we provided, you have a copy of an email documenting that Mr. Barnett met with Mr. Wirick in April of this year on exactly the subject. Despite these complaints, neither the permities nor any of its representatives ever received a phone call, an email, or any other communication regarding this issue from the city. And to be clear, the project team, like I said, was in near constant communication with city officials on a variety of issues, even meeting with them on-site to discuss the project construction a couple weeks before the stop-work order was issued. When we were able to follow up with city staff regarding the shocking stop-work order, they advised us to request a hearing to seek authorization to continue the project. While we have requested the hearing and are here tonight participating, in your supplemental materials, we make clear that we do not believe this hearing is necessary as the permities have vested rights to continue with this project. In addition to receiving no advance notification or an opportunity to be heard in advance of the October 4th stop-work order, neither permities nor any of its representatives received any notification of the purported impending August 2017 expiration of the project entitlements. This stands in stark contrast to the city's pattern and practice of routinely notifying us when an expiration date or deadline was approaching. The city has many emails and formal notices documenting it notifying permities of upcoming key deadlines and the need to request extensions. And in fact, permities routinely sought and obtained various entitlement and permit extensions in the more than four years since the project was approved. We are disappointed, unfortunately, in the staff report's lack of information about the extent of project activities that have occurred over the past 17 years. And I therefore wanted to just walk you through, and I'm not going to go through this list in detail, I'm just going to hit the highlights. But in our correspondence earlier today, we submitted to you what is a five-page list. And it really is a highlight of the activities that have transpired on the project site and as part of the project to date. Back in 2001, this project was originally envisioned as a 40-unit hotel and 10 apartment units. And over the course of the city's entitlement processing, which dates until 2014, the project was changed multiple times, ultimately resulting in the 14 apartment units and the commercial building area that has now been approved. The project was approved, the use permit was approved by the city council in February of 2014. And two weeks later, on March 1st of 2014, the project team began preparation of construction drawings and overall condition of approval coordination between the project teams and the various agencies that needed to be involved. Later that year, we obtained design review and historic preservation commission approval. Two years later, after a lot of back and forth about the lift station design and what was going to be appropriate for the sewer, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors had to grant us variance to proceed with the sewer as designed. That occurred in February of 2016. It took us more than another year to come up with an agreement between the water agency and the city, really, as to the mitigation measure required for sewer. And to walk you through that process, that was a three-year negotiation with the water agency. Originally, the mitigation measure that is included as part of the final EIR for this project required a very specific mitigation measure based on a program that the agency then had in effect. That program was abandoned by the agency and we needed to come up with a substitute mitigation measure, which still mitigated the same impact. And it took the water agency years to come up with that. David Goodison routinely checked in with them as to their progress. We routinely checked in with them as to their project. But it was not until 2017 that we had agreed upon, late in 2017, agreed upon a mitigation measure that we could implement, that the water agency would actually allow us to implement. Early this year, the sewer permit was issued for onsite improvements. We began negotiating in earnest the tribal treatment plan, which took us almost a year to negotiate with the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria. In February of this year, the well abandonment permit was issued and all of the well abandonment work on-site was performed. The building permit was also issued in August. The construction contract was finalized. Like I said, in September, all of the construction financing was secured and closed and the notice to proceed was issued to Wright Contracting in mid-September. And then, from mid-September, for about a week, a variety of construction activity took place on the project site. There were blueprints being printed, trailers were being rented and delivered, the porta-potties were rented and delivered, perimeter security fencing was installed, survey staking was performed. On the 20th of September, a pre-construction all-personnel meeting was held at the project site, which included the GC, all the subcontractors. It included representatives of city staff as well. And then, on September 30th, the vibration monitoring contract was executed and the vibration consultant was out on-site on the morning of October 4th, performing vibration testing and establishing the criteria for the ongoing monitoring at the project site. Later in that day is when we received notification that all of the building permits had been suspended. So, as you can tell, there's never been a time during the 17-year history of this project that the project has not been active or that we have not pursued construction of this project. We've worked diligently for years in cooperation with city staff and other agency staff to get to the point where the general contractor and all subcontractors had been hired and construction activity had begun on-site. This work was not done behind closed doors. It was literally out in the open and fully permitted by the city. And in many cases, the city was an active participant in the various activities. Now, this is a legal issue. And so, this is the legal part of my presentation and then I'll conclude. First, as set forth in our various supplemental materials, we disagree vehemently with any contention that the use permit expired in August of 2017 or at any point. The project entitlements were extended both at the permities' request and by operation of law at various points over the past four years, with all of the documentation, therefore, set forth in the city's extensive records. Second, as a matter of federal constitutional law, the city could not suspend and revoke the project entitlements and permits without first offering the permities the opportunity to be heard. That never happened and the project has been shut down and will be shut down for many more months as a result of the city's action. Note that the suspension of the permits here effectively results in a revocation as the building permits, if not reinstated and extended, will expire before construction can recommence. Courts in California have held that revocation of a building permit without notice in a hearing is a violation of due process. Due process requires the city to act upon, only upon notice to the permity, upon a hearing, and upon evidence substantially supporting a finding of revocation. And third, even if some sort of technical automatic expiration of one of the multitude of permits required here occurred, which we don't believe is the case, the activities of the permity and the project team demonstrate both reliance and good faith sufficient to overcome any automatic expiration. We would refer you to the case of Community Development Committee versus the city of Fort Bragg. That case is a 1988 case where the court held that a developer's activities demonstrated good faith sufficient to overcome automatic expiration of a conditional use permit where the developer had pursued and obtained a funding commitment from HUD, closed on the real property, hired architects and engineers for pre-construction work, had soil borings performed, cleared the site, and submitted plans for building inspection. In this case, the permity has done far more. As I said at the outset, we're exasperated by this process. This housing should have been constructed long ago and made available to many of our neighbors who desperately need it. We respectfully request this evening that you adopt staff's recommendation and that you also request that staff be directed to take any action necessary to ensure the project entitlements and building and permits are extended for at least 12 months in order to allow construction to recommence and the project to be successful. Our team is available for any questions that you may have. And I would like to reserve the opportunity to respond to any comments that are made by the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. With that then, I will open this public hearing to other members of the public. You may approach the podium and you have three minutes each to, or less, to speak on the item. Does anyone care to speak?
Thank you, Chair Felder. Members of the commission, I'm Michael Woods. I represent Simon Blatner here this evening. I understand there was a reference to supplemental materials that were provided today, 37 pages. I haven't had the opportunity to see that or review it. Was that made available to the public at this evening's meeting?
Yes, we had copies that we distributed to the commissioners and we can provide a copy to you.
Would appreciate that. Thank you. One of my comments was going to be, and I appreciate Ms. Lawson's comments on the record, but one of my comments was going to be, I don't see the substantial evidence in the record that was before you, at least that I had the opportunity to review, that would have supported the contradictory information between what you're hearing from the applicant and what you see in the staff report. There are disconnects in terms of the staffs having conducted inspections of the property and finding that no construction had been undertaken and indications in the applicant's correspondence that indicated the contrary. I think the concern that we have here is not about the substance of the project, it's the process. And it's the possibility that what the city ends up here in is sort of a Groundhog Day of when does a permit expire. You've got bright-line standards in your code that provide for the timeline that has been laid out this evening. And I think staff in good faith reviewed that timeline before issuing their notice to the applicant and came to the conclusion that the use permit had expired and that the permits were no longer valid. It's an important determination. I think staff was absolutely right in having a hearing this evening or giving the applicant the opportunity to request a hearing. But I do think the public needs to be given an opportunity to review the supplemental information that was submitted this evening in order to review it and to comment on it. My other concern is that the resolution that's before you this evening is standing next to the letter from counsel for the applicant that raises many important legal arguments that the city needs to be, I think, very careful in reviewing. Is this an AFCO substantial, is this an AFCO vested rights determination? Is it a determination based on a stopple, which is a dangerous slippery slope for the city to go down and acknowledging that it's a stop from denying the ability of a building permit? Or is it lachies, another argument raised by counsel for the applicant? I think you need to unpack the various legal issues involved in that letter, provide folks with the opportunity to review the supplemental materials that were submitted, and then take a look at the analysis that's based on all of that activity. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing now, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I believe Ms. Lawson asked for an opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, she has nothing to add?
Thank you. I thought she might approach if she really felt she had to say something more, but I appreciate you calling my attention to it. All right, we'll come back to the commission then for additional questions or deliberation.
Excuse me, I have a question for the attorney for Hanson Bridget, representing the applicant. There's a lot of information floating around. I'm just trying to pin down a couple of things in your talk. You mentioned several conversations with David Goodison sometime in the past, and he wasn't responsive to that. Specifically, what was that conversation? What was the request and when did that occur?
Yeah, I'd actually like Bill Willers, the project architect, to join me. Both Bill and I had conversations with staff about the proper process, given that it was taking so long for the water agency to come up with an alternative mitigation measure. And because that process had, I mean, literally took years, we did float the idea to Mr. Goodison at one point of coming back to the planning commission to remove the automatic expiration provision of the use permit and instead tie it to the water agency approval because that was taking so long. And that was completely outside of the city's control and also completely outside of our control. And if you, the summary of activities I provided you, I think there's probably 10 different line items that relate to just that issue. Frankly, there were 50. Frankly, there were 50 or 100, you know, back and forth, and we ultimately did involve David in the process. He became quite an advocate, you know, for the city's position of, we've got these permits in place, we'd like them to be able to proceed with these permits, or like the permits to be able to be finalized or something to happen, but one of the holdups is just this sewer mitigation measure that we couldn't find a solution for. So, Bill, do you have anything to add to?
I'll, I'll go.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, while the gentleman's coming to the podium, I can't speak for David, but I can speak for Davids in general, perhaps. Clearly, the municipal code does only allow for two extensions, and those were the end date of that August, the first 2017 date, so David couldn't manufacture an additional extension, at least on the discretionary entitlements, because that was the limit of what was permissible. So it's quite possible Christine is talking about having something to do with the extension of the building permits. Clearly, David knew that the building permit had been submitted prior to the expiration of that date, because we said that in December 27th of 16, that's when the building permit was submitted, and the use permit was still valid for another eight months or so. And it wasn't until after that that possibly this conversation's occurring that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Bill Willers, A 73, First Street West, Chair Felder of the Commission. It is around that period of time, we were having difficulty with the Sonoma County Water Agency providing us with a mitigation plan that would satisfy them, that would also have some nexus to this project in terms of its impact. The Sonoma County Water Agency had abandoned its toilet program, felt that we could no longer satisfy that, had required in the original conditions of approval a project that was far beyond the scope of the impact of this project that we had proven via Adobe Associates. And we requested of the Sonoma County Water Agency to provide us with a mitigation plan that we, that would take care of our impact on the infrastructure, that we could accomplish, and their response to us at that time, when they decided that they were going to, or that they couldn't use the toilet mitigation and agreed with us that the nexus wasn't there for the other condition of approval, was, could you provide us with a program that you would be able to organize? And we felt that was not really our responsibility. That became clear to us that the Sonoma County Water Agency was going to be not diligent in their response to us. It started to move through the chain of command at Sonoma County Water Agency. If you've ever dealt with them, you'll know that that chain of command is quite deep, and it's very difficult. At one point, it took three months to get a response via email to one question, and that's documented in the record of emails that we have. We finally came to the position where the Sonoma County Water Agency hired a subconsultant who could run special software that could plug this project in and run the impact on the system with that special software, and we came up with a 15-foot sec, or a 45-foot section of pipe on Broadway, a minor project, but it took three years to get to that point. From the day that this use permit was submitted and/or approved in April, in March, Adobe engineers began working with the Sonoma County Water Agency to solve the sewer issues, and from that March, couple of weeks after that, we worked continually for three months, three years, to get a mitigation plan from them. When that, when we were up against the use permit, building permit, the reasons, I have to step back, the reason why the building permit was not submitted initially after we received the use permit is because we knew we had these mitigation requirements that we would have to solve. Many of them were contingent or made contingent, the approval of the permit. In other words, we would have to have mitigation requirements satisfied before the building permit could be issued. If we, if we submitted a building permit early, we would expire all of our application expiration dates, because we knew the Sonoma County Water Agency at that point was going to take too long. I literally held back, completed sets of drawings, waiting till I felt like we were on a track to get Sonoma County Water Agency approval. We were up against the wall of the second approval being, or the second extension being terminated, essentially. I submitted drawings to exercise at least the building permit application. It became clear that we were going to get nowhere quickly with Sonoma County Water Agency, and I made a request in a phone conversation with David, I'd like to bring this back to the Planning Commission to remove this condition of approval that links the issuance of the building permit upon this mitigation requirement to the, either the final occupancy of this project or the construction of the project, but to delink the approval of the permit to this, because that was, that was what was making the permits expire, was the inadequacy of the response from the Sonoma County Water Agency. It's very complicated. That's why it's taken four years. It's very complicated.
I have a question, since you're both up here. So what you're saying is that in these, in this particular circumstance, the issuance of the building permit could not take place for anything such as grading or site preparation work or anything until this mitigation measure was satisfied?
The conditions of approval of the original project required that those mitigation requirements be satisfied prior to the issuance of a building permit.
And then the typical permit approval, say, of like another project, you would typically be trying to implement a building permit by starting with grading and putting in a foundation and doing other things while you're still trying to satisfy other conditions.
The grading permit was also.
But in this particular instance, the conditions of approval were crafted in such a way that that specific mitigation measure, which was tied to an environmental review and an E I R, had to be satisfied before the building official could technically issue a building permit for any activity on-site.
We cannot perfect the grading permit or the building permit until that mitigation requirement was satisfied.
Thank you.
It wasn't just that one requirement, too. Multiple.
There's multiple requirements.
The conditions of approval had to be satisfied before a building permit issued. That is one of the ones that, excuse me, that was one of the ones that was outside of the control of both the City of Sonoma and then also the applicant team, because it was a separate agency approval. That was really the holdup here. Like, you know, the planning director mentioned, if those departments would have been internal to the city rather than external county agencies, we wouldn't have had this processing problem.
Thank you.
I've got a quick one. Actually, it's for Mr. Willers. When, when did you go to David? Can you give me a little timeline?
I don't, I don't have it written down. It wasn't in an email, it was a phone conversation. We, and in a second discussion that Christine and I had with him, we recommended that we do this. His fear of doing it was to open up the madness that had happened during the 14 years previous. And he was afraid of that. He did not want the public circus, essentially, that happened around this project. And so he was reluctant to let us do that. And we did, at that point, we didn't feel like forcing, we didn't feel like coming forward and threatening that way. We requested it, and it didn't happen. And it put us in this situation. But although, I will say, from the day that we began this process until the day that we exercised the building permits, David and Rob were advocates in a sense of making sure that the county was aware of the issues that were related to permitting of this project as we were moving forward, and tried their best to make it happen more quickly, and even that didn't really happen.
I have a question now for the city attorney as it relates to environmental review, E I Rs, and mitigation measures. There can be some circumstances where a mitigation measure can never be fulfilled for a number of extenuating circumstances. That's probably not the case here for a sewer permit, but in a broader sense, sometimes discretionary permits or ministerial permits cannot be issued because a mitigation measure cannot take place. But I don't believe that's the case for this particular project, because this really has to do with building some sort of infrastructure, which there's probably some cost associated with it and some design issues associated with, but I don't see it not being able to be realized other than a financial fiduciary responsibility. So I'm getting to my question. The question is, or we're being asked to extend the building permits for 12 months, and in that 12-month time, the applicant is not able to fulfill the mitigation measure that's been imposed upon him. When does it seem in your mind that it's reasonable to say that the project needs to be resubmitted and the conditions need to be revised to reevaluate what the mitigation measure was intended to do, and in this case, provide water or sewer service or whatever?
So I think there might be a little bit of confusion about what you're being asked to do. You're being asked to issue a ruling as to the expiration of the land use entitlements. Have those land use entitlements expired, or has the applicant done enough to prevent their expiration under the standards that staff has articulated to you? The Planning Commission actually does not have purview over the building permits. The purview over the building permits rests with the chief building official. The chief building official issued a temporary suspension of the existing building permits pending the outcome of this hearing. I'm assuming, and he can state for himself for the record, that wants the, if the commission were to rule, once there is a final ruling by the city, that the land use entitlements have not expired, that gives the chief building official the opportunity to lift his suspension of the existing building permits. Now, the question of extending those existing building permits obviously will still exist. The impediment to extending the building permits, if this commission, if the city makes a determination that the land use entitlements are not expired, there will not be an impediment to the building official issuing extensions to the building permits until such time as construction can begin. I think what the applicant's request, and I, since the public hearing's closed, they can't really, what I took the applicant's request to be, was a request that the commission sort of suggest to the chief building official, yes, extend the permits, don't, don't let the building permits expire in order to keep the project moving forward in the event that you make a determination that the land use entitlements are not expired pursuant to this hearing.
Thank you. I was getting confused over what it was we're being asked.
It's okay. Thank you.
Now, I'm also confused, no, but.
Oh, I cleared it up over here and made confusion here, sorry.
Let me try to articulate what I'm trying to get to. We're talking about a use permit now, and the code is very specific on two extensions from a certain date. And I believe from what's been presented tonight, we've exceeded the date for those two extensions. Is that correct?
Yes, under the code, as the code reads, for the automatic extension, or automatic expiration, however, the Planning Commission has within its purview, under the hearing requirements and under California law, to say, those automatic extensions do not apply in this case because the intent of an automatic extension has not been met, the applicant had no intent to abandon, in good faith proceeded to attempt to perfect the permits, and therefore we are not applying this automatic extension requirement to this application.
That's what I was trying to get to. So there is the issue of good faith, so that we have, we have the ability to remove the automatic expiration, if you would.
Correct.
Because of the extenuating circumstances that have taken place.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First one for Wayne, maybe a combination of Wayne and David. On the original conditions of approval, were those conditions out of the ordinary, or were they pretty typical of projects of similar nature?
So luckily, we were able to bring a copy of those. There's 23 of them, and as I'm just kind of going through them, just going backwards, condition number 23 is talking about the mitigation, a mitigation measure relating to noise. Again, this is like ongoing during construction. There's probably about a half a dozen that are things that have to be done prior to the issuance of a building permit. Some things are, some conditions even talk to prior to occupancy, you know, another step further down the line. So I'm not seeing anything that's absolutely unusual here. This is normal kind of conditions of approval.
If I might add one additional thing, however, while the project, while this particular project has, I already forgot the number 23, specific conditions of approval, number one is a, I'm going to call it a multi-parter, because at the time that these conditions of approval were written, staff basically included a condition that just said, oh, and comply with all the mitigation measures in the environmental document. So condition number one is a condition that says, go look to the environmental document and see what else that says you have to do before you can move the project forward. I don't know that they are outside of the ordinary per se, but there were a large number of both mitigation measures and conditions on this particular project, but they are typical of projects, either with those impacts that were identified in this environmental document, or with projects that need sewer service or water service or, or any other permits. The, the one that may be slightly outside the ordinary in the context of sort of global among all cities, but not too extraordinary within Sonoma County, was the mitigation measure relating to a tribal treatment plan or, or tribal resources. Those negotiations can sometimes be protracted. I don't know how much time it took in the present case without, I'm not sure the timeline addresses that particular issue, but when projects are addressed to those issues, sometimes that extends a little longer than maybe what you might call a typical normal project.
Yeah, second question for David. When the project architect approached the former planning director to, requesting to delink, and I'm just stealing that word as far as a description of X from Y, was that something that was within his power to do?
I don't believe, I don't believe so, and I probably, I think I would probably have opined in the same way. You couldn't unlink them, because, because the issue, the issue was, was the use permit able to be extended even further from what had already happened under the code? And the statutory ones, the statute ones had already been expired, I believe, at the time. That's why I asked the question, at what time did that happen? Was it post-August the 1st of 2017, that they were trying to get another year out of it? But clearly, the, the building permit had been submitted in December of 16. But again, I wasn't, that's why I asked the question about when that conversation occurred.
But I was under the impression that the thing that they were trying to get removed was the satisfaction of one mitigation measure before they could proceed. So they were only trying to get a relief from that mitigation measure.
I think the applicant alluded to what the applicant's opinion was about the planning director's motivations, but in order to modify the conditions of approval, the project would have to come back, have come back through the process to modify the conditions of approval. So if that's what the applicant was essentially requesting, go back through the entitlement process, and we are asking for a request to a modification of a condition of approval, take it back to the review body and amend our conditions of approval, then that would have been the process to do it. To amend a condition of approval would have been to come back before the review authority.
Thank you. Where are we at?
My, I have one last question. I didn't have a chance to review the packet that was submitted to us, because it was just given to us. Has staff had a chance to review it? Has the city attorney had a chance to, to review this? Is there something that we should know? Or is there like a summary of, to help the commission understand what?
While Veronica's looking at that, I can give you my two cents, because, again, it was about 37 pages. Received it, I want to say. Received it, I want to say mid-afternoon.
My email said 4:46.
Okay, mid to late afternoon perhaps. But the point being is that I've had a chance to review it. And I can tell you that I believe the first five or six pages is a timeline that's been given to us by the applicant, of which many of those things in that timeline, we as city staff would not have been privy to. But I do admit that there is a record of correspondence between the applicant and Wayne and Mr. Goodison that shows an intent. We've established that in our staff report for you. I can also tell you that tonight, we gave you a November 6th piece of correspondence, which is also in the 37 pages that we received. So there's a bit of redundancy there. But as far as the legal matters, I'll turn that over to Veronica.
So I was just going to actually point out the same thing that the planning director did. The attachments to, the attachments beyond attachment, attachment to and following were documents previously submitted to the city. So only the first, I'd have to count the number of pages, but only the things preceding attachment to are new to, new to tonight, I guess I would say. I have had a chance to look at the information while we've been sitting here. It includes some correspondence between the city that are, was provided to the applicant as part of a records request. It includes correspondence that we would not have had the opportunity to have prior to this, dealing with the performance of their vibration analysis that was part of the mitigation measures, which occurred. I don't know when it occurred. It's in the timeline. But the letter is dated October 12th. While I haven't reviewed the substance of that, and that would be something that Wayne would review anyway, I note that it was submitted on October, or the letter was provided to the applicant from the consultant on October the 12th. I do not know whether the city was previously in receipt, however, of that preceding the date that the permits were suspended. And Wayne can potentially speak to that. No, we were not apparently. With regard to the rest of it, it is in fact primarily a timeline of all of the activities that the applicant had noted had taken place. Much of this precedes the date of entitlements, if you will. So many pages of this, going back to 2001, precedes the date of the entitlements. But there are, there are lists of three pages, basically, post, three and a half pages, post the entitlement process, of their attempted activities and correspondence, both with the city and third parties, that they believe expresses, I believe, their intent to proceed with the project.
I have one last question. I'm so sorry. Are this public hearing, can this public hearing and any decision made by this commission be appealed to the city council?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my fellow commissioners, is anybody here feel comfortable enough to make a motion?
I am.
We can make comments after the motion if you'd like.
So I'd like to make a motion to determine that the use permit and design review approval for the previously approved Mission Square Development Project, located at 165 East Spain Street, a 14-unit residential product, is determined not to be expired pursuant to Chapter 19.46 of the Sonoma Municipal Code, and finding that the determination thereof is within the scope of the previously certified environmental impact report for the project.
Before the motion is seconded, may I ask for just a minor clarification? And your motion is essentially that the approval of the resolution by that title. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Is there a second first?
I'll second that.
Okay, now we can have further discussion.
I'd like to just add, first of all, before I make my decision, I wanted to say that the, I believe that the project applicant and the developer has... Let me step back. I believe that the project and an extension of the project, this project still meets the city's high standards and tests for our general plan and general plan compliance. This project is needed for rental housing in the city and our community. And I believe this project provides a community benefit. I believe that the, number two, that the hearing requirements of California law allows our commission to establish intent in terms of continuation of a use permit. I believe the applicant has demonstrated the intent based on not only public testimony from the applicant's attorney, but also the supplemental information that they provided. I believe that the information and public testimony shows that there was no intent to abandon the project. And the public hearing with the planning commission is also an additional testament that the applicant wants to continue with building permits. And therefore, as a planning commissioner, I would also recommend approval of the resolution.
Any other further comments?
I wanted just to make a couple of comments. I was not part of, really actively privy to the circus that has taken place since 2001. And from my position, what I'm hearing is that there's been a lot of influences on why it has taken 17, 18 years. A lot of those influences were not generated from the city. And yet, we sit up here receiving a lot of your frustration, which I certainly can understand. But it certainly sounds like the predominant roadblocks were some of the mitigation measures. I also understand that by pulling the building permit was kind of a very, had a great impact on the project. But as I sit and I listen and I look over at that 18-page sequence of events, I'm seeing a lot of it was not city-initiated. So I just needed to at least be clarified, or someone can correct me. But it seems like it has been a long journey. And I certainly recognize and agree with my fellow commissioners that the applicant has shown no intent of abandonment. They have shown good process. But it is also, it needs to be recognized that a lot of the delay was not instigated, at least in my eyes, by the city.
I can't disagree with the previous two commissioners' comments, Mr. Wellander and Mr. McDonald. I'm troubled by the fact that this has taken so long and one side or another didn't bring this to a head a long time ago. And I'm troubled how the planning director perhaps could have had an obligation to do that. I'm really sympathetic to the efforts that the applicant has gone through to try to make this mitigation measure go through. That's clear that they've made an astounding effort on that. Sounds very frustrating. But I'm not in a position, as a planning commissioner, in my opinion, to make judgments about whether the good faith efforts have earned the ability to continue these permits. I'm having a real tough time with that. I feel like my main obligation as a planning commissioner is to ensure that these rules, regulations, and schedules, this is a very important one, are enforced, particularly by the planning staff. And that's frankly what troubles me the most. And it concerns me that perhaps allowing this to move forward would set a bad precedent. Other people will be coming along and using this precedent to waffle on obligations that they have. And that's my, that's my prime concern.
I agree with most of the comments of my fellow commissioners. And I think the fact that the applicant has shown good faith, commitment to the project, and no sense of abandonment to the project, coupled with the fact that we have the ability to override the automatic expiration of a use permit if we think that this situation, the circumstances, were unusual or out of the control of the applicant. So I feel strongly that this is a case where we don't have to enforce the letter of the law if the spirit of the law says something else, and that's where I'm at. So I'm going to call a question and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carrato?
Yes.
Commissioner Wellander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohar?
No.
Commissioner McDonald?
Oh, yes.
Chair Felder?
Yes.
Motion passed for one.
So I guess we're going to take about a two-minute recess. And we are on the Item 7 Issues Update. Planning Director.
Thank you. We do have a few projects that are still under review in the department. I will just kind of just go through a few of them to tell you where they are. I can tell you that I had a meeting with the folks at the Sonoma Cheese Factory, I won't say a couple of weeks ago, and we're still talking about an appropriate method of which to address the concerns of the applicant and the other process. So that's still in process. With respect to some other projects we have coming up, we do have a city council meeting coming up on November 19th. I can't really go through the whole agenda, but I do know the packet's available for your review, I believe, tomorrow. I know it was being...
It's, it came out tonight, so it's available.
Yeah. So I know that we were working on that, on some of the items there. On the 20th of November, I know that the staff will be getting out a packet for the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. There's about four or five items on that agenda. And I believe, I'll ask for forgiveness at this point, but I know on December 3rd, the Gateway Findings will return to the city council. It was continued from the last meeting. On December 10th, the new city council members will be installed.
Can I interrupt on that one?
Sure.
Do they expect a reading from the Fair Practices Commission at that point?
Well, I think that was the hope at this point. And so at that point, as we get closer, we'll be able to let you know.
But that's...
That was the goal.
That's the goal, yeah.
That concludes my comments as far as projects that are out there. If there's anything specifically you'd like to hear, I can kind of address that.
What's the status on the hotel for the EIR?
Status of the EIR for the hotel?
Yes, the document, as you know, is being prepared, the response to comments document. I believe that the issues were greenhouse gases, VMT, and the like. And recently, yesterday, council and myself were involved in a discussion on that as far as strategy to address and create those documents.
Okay, I believe then, do you want to discuss training at all?
Yes, I wasn't sure if that was going to be part of this particular component.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What's the status on the Affordable Housing Project down on Broadway? I hear that it hit a snag. Is there any substance to that?
Saha project?
Yeah, the Saha project.
I don't personally know anything.
I don't even know the project. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, I heard they lost their funding. Yeah, who? Right.
I can look into it.
I think as part of the Affordable Housing Tax Credit process, you apply to the state for a disbursement, and it's not guaranteed. So I think they didn't get it. But I think they're open to applying in future rounds. And by the way, I don't know for sure that's what happened. But in terms of like losing funding, that could be what happened.
It happens. Yeah, I can contact the applicant. Would that be just one commissioner, or would the rest of the commission be interested?
Yeah, we'd like to hear the result.
I can report back at the next meeting.
December 13th. Unless you call another special meeting.
No, I think the commission has the ability to do that, too. As for me and my house, no. If I can just kind of address very quickly, if you recall, I asked you to kind of contact me with respect to the Sonoma State Planning Training. So I think tomorrow's your deadline. So I think I've only got two or three of you that are interested in doing that. And I understand that there might have been some apprehension until November the 6th finished. So if there's additional bodies that would like to participate, I'm happy to.
Who are the three that you have signed up to?
Well, I believe yourself, obviously. And I think Mr. Bohar had said that he wanted to go. And I think Mr. McDonald, didn't you say that you wanted to go too when we talked?
And the training is in...
This is the annual training. It's the 35th annual.
On December 1st.
And I think also, Commissioner, I'm seeing everybody here right now saying they want to go. I know Commissioner Barnett told me a long time ago on my first day here, I think it was.
The, what is it, the...
It's a Saturday, I believe, the first day.
It's a Saturday morning from 9:00 to 1:00.
The meeting in March, though, the activity in March, I believe, I can't remember what it was, so.
No, the one in March, I believe, is the Long Beach, the League of California Cities Institute. And then we actually have a national APA conference in San Francisco in April.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What's the deadline for that one?
It's quite a ways away. I mean, they're still doing requests for...
Because some of us may not know we're going to be on the commissions. I don't want to like...
Commissioner Creb wanted to go to the Sonoma State, so you should put his name on it.
Right now, I think it's all seven of you, so. Right, right now, I think it's all seven of you, so, okay, all six of you.
Will you be going, David?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, I think I want to hold out for the league. I think that would be a better one, to be honest with you. Looking at the tentative agenda for the one in Sonoma State, not to downplay it, but they'll be talking about some things that are unique to Santa Rosa, so I'm not quite sure if it's appropriate. But I think as far as commissioner training, I think the bang for the buck is at the one at Long Beach for the technical side of planning matters, then obviously the national conference, and I think we can make that call a little bit later, as well as the Long Beach one as well. But the one at Sonoma State is pretty cheap, so it's really not really a loser. If I can just interject one other thing, so right now, six. With respect to membership of the American Planning Association, we do have the ability, very cheap, at $65 a commissioner, to be able to get membership with the full privileges of membership of APA, where you'll get the planning magazine, there's a planning commissioner's monthly bulletin that goes out. I think that'd be a good exercise of some money here.
I had asked to do that last year.
Well, we'll exclude you then, just for fun. How's that?
And you know why I'm in on that one?
Pardon me?
I'm in on that one.
Okay, yeah, so I think it's a good thing. If, I'll, shall I assume that all commissioners are interested in that at this point? Thank you. I'll go ahead and contact you as far as filling out your membership details so that we can get that thing processed and started.
Great.
Good. To both of you, again, I'm going to sound like the squeaky wheel. If there's any legal way that we can discourage late mail, I would like to do it. And again, part of it is that I think we all take our work seriously, and when we come here, I'm coming here to prepare for the information, the prep I've been doing, and to all of a sudden have something slammed down in front of me is an absolute distraction. So therefore, I have to, and then I feel obligated to read it because the public wrote it. But I, and then secondarily, is there any legal way that we can minimize, if not eliminate, informational dump at the last minute? And that was more specific to something I should have said last Thursday, and I did not. Because again, I don't know what the motivation is, if it's, it typically lets overwhelm them with so much information that they'll just beg to, to agree with us. I don't know, so.
I hate to, I'll respond only by saying, in the many, many years that I've been doing this, relative to planning matters is where it occurs more often than anything else, I hate to say. There is a, sometimes it's just a circumstance, a product of circumstance. Other times, there are certain, I'll call land use practitioners and applicants who subscribe to what I will not so lovingly refer to as the sandbag method, where, yeah, there's this data dump slash allegation dump slash whatever in the hopes of not giving anybody, including staff, enough time to analyze that information. You know, we can look at the issue and whether or not there have been any strategies implemented to try to discourage it. It's difficult in the context of a public hearing, however, because as you know, the evidence that constitutes the record of a public hearing is anything submitted prior to or at the public hearing. And so when you're receiving evidence, if you will, you're receiving evidence from individuals who just walk up to the podium to speak, and the circumstances are that that becomes part of the record of the public hearing. So it's difficult to conceive of a way that we can say, oh, well, we're not going to consider your evidence because it was written form and late, or written form and at the hearing versus the people who stand to the podium. We've tried to put out into our public hearing notices and notices to the applicant over the last, since the last time the commission raised this issue, encouragement, you know, if you want your information to be thoroughly read, please submit it, you know, by and before this deadline, which staff has typically put out as 10 days before the meeting in an effort to try to encourage them to get it in sooner. But it is a difficult issue, and we do understand the commission's frustration with that.
Just one kind of side point, too, we saw some of that evidence tonight, we're getting a set of conditions of approval, right before the meeting is too late. And we've had that discussion now, and I think we'll do what we can to try to get the information. And that also helps, helps the public. If that packet of information is out there far enough in advance, it might encourage them to submit their response earlier.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can just let you know that there were extending circum, circumstances, I can't even say the word, it's getting late, extenuating circumstances on our part, and I apologize for that.
Appreciate that, but we just got to keep striving to do better.
A staff point of clarity. Christina is contract and short-term?
Yes, the, short-term in the sense she's not full-time.
But has she filled Rob's, is, is she the body that's filling the position that Rob left?
Yes and no, not entitled, but in body, yes, until we determine a full-time.
Does she work for the city of Sonoma?
Yes, that is correct, yes. So, but not as a full-time employee, but she is hired by the city until the end of December, and I'm anticipating extending that contract.
David, regarding updates to the agendas and the commission packages, it's very difficult to see changes unless there were some kind of addendum note to the, when a whole package comes through with changes. Could we have some kind of a sidebar note that says, here are the things that were changed to your previous package, so we can pick them out?
I'm not sure. Are you talking about red line changes to the conditions or something in the?
Anywhere in the package. Couldn't we get a note that there's an additional addendum, there's additional attachment, there's changes to X paragraph? I mean, otherwise, we'd have to go through the whole package to figure out, trying to figure out a change.
We've had a circumstance, at least in the last two or three agendas, where there's a second agenda comes out that says updated, but it doesn't tell you what's been updated.
Oh, we had a revised agenda, I think it was, we added some additional information to the agenda item, if I recall correctly.
But that's, so I think that's what Commissioner Bohar is asking for.
So when we do, it's not a spot the difference and see if you can do it or not, we'll actually try to make a, put it in different font color.
Even if you send an email that explains what's been added.
What the revised portion was, sure. Thank you.
Did you get a notice that it was updated?
Yes.
An email?
Says updated.
It just says it at the top of the agenda.
What? Don't know.
Are you also talking or referring to like applications, say, for example, a project submitted to us and it's continued, and there was reason why it's continued, and then we get the application? It'd be helpful to have a summary, like this project was submitted in July, and there was a continued because of X, Y, and Z, and these are the things that we've done to fulfill giving you information on, on, on those points, and then here we are today, just like a summary to help us put everything in context so we can look at what has happened and what we're.
Well, and especially with items that have been continued, it's important to include, I think, the, all of the pertinent materials from the original hearing in the new packet somehow, because it's difficult to assume that a commissioner can go back into his pile of records and find some previous set of conditions or whatever that, you know, say they still apply and you know they're back there.
I'm disappointed that you don't keep these forever at your homes, but.
We do, the garage attic is full.
Tell me you do, please. No, in fact, I struggle with that very question, because both of the items on the agenda night had entitlements that were previously approved, as we've talked. One was recently within the last year, the other one, 2014, and I had to make that qualitative call on the content. You'd have had about 1,000 pages, I think, plus the EIRs that were associated with the last item.
Well, and we've gone through a transition on the way documents are stored on the website and everything, and some of that old information is not available any longer.
Tonight it wasn't.
Yeah, so I mean, we've got that gap as well.
Thank you, I'll take a look at that.
Are we done?
It's nice to have you on board, David. It's nice the void has been filled.
Oh, and I have another comment. I want to thank Vice Chair Wellender for performing above and beyond. He's told me that.
Yes, you owe him. He had a tough night.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? None.
So for that, you owe me a break.